Check, check, check.
All right, fellow board members, I'll call the June 27th meeting to order. Let's start it with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Roll call, please.
Dr. McBride is absent. Mr. Perez?
Here.
Dr. Gase?
Here.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
And Dr. McBride did, she's excused, she did plan on being absent today and she'd already made plans accordingly, so the meeting will continue. And first, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda with the amended action item 7.15 and 7.16 that was added.
So moved.
Second.
And I would also like to point out that on page six, there's just a numbering discrepancy. So we're going to go under Action Items from 7.02 to 8.11 and then back to 7.03. That's just a label, so we're not going to renumber everything. And then on page nine, President or Vice President Perez, you'll notice that after 7.13, we will go to Action Item 9, which is for the opportunity for the public to dialogue with the board. So that's just numbering, that there's no Section 8. But as I said, it's just a label, so we're not going to renumber everything. I just didn't want you to stumble on it when you got to it. That's all.
And the action 7.15 and 7.16 involves the hiring of a principal for the high school, correct?
Yes.
So with that, any other further discussion on the agenda?
And I'm sorry, I'll need to know who moved and seconded?
It was Dr. Gase moved and?
No, Kizbeth moved.
Kizbeth moved.
Thank you.
Both, please.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes. And it takes us to the Agenda portion for recognition. Mr. Bose?
Thank you, Mr. Perez. It's indeed my honor and privilege to recognize the fourth quarter Crystal Apple Award winners for the 2021-2022 school year, our final recipients for this school year. This is a program that we brought back about five years ago, four years ago, and we continue to recognize some of Tiffin's finest educators and staff members. And certainly, tonight, we have two exceptional candidates to recognize. So first, I want to bring up Mrs. Charlotte Lineiger. Mrs. Lineiger is an Intervention Specialist at Noble 45. She was nominated by Michelle McComas. Charlotte has been a teacher for Tiffin City Schools for 22 years. During that time, she has served our special needs students in several different buildings. She is currently a teacher at Noble 45. She holds a Bachelor's of Science in Education for Developmentally Handicapped and a Master's of Education in the field of Curriculum and Teaching. In the area of teaching, this is what Mrs. McComas has to say about Charlotte. Charlotte has a bag full of tricks and tips to help students remember and make connections to concepts being taught. It doesn't matter what time of the year or how long ago they were introduced. These tips and tricks are referred to whenever applicable. You often hear her reciting songs, rhymes, clue words, or doing movements to help trigger students throughout the students' thought processes. For example, when we are teaching measurement conversions, Charlotte moves through our motions with each problem to help students decide whether they should multiply or divide. She moves throughout the whole classroom, offering guidance, reinforcement, and encouragement. In the area of commitment, Mrs. Lineiger's commitment to her students is undeniable. She identifies what students need and freely gives her time to help them succeed. She may chat with a student to see how she can help with them, or she may give up her before-school or lunchtime to work with a student one-on-one. Charlotte is focused not only on her students, but also on all the students. She is committed to helping all students not just learn, but to thrive in the classroom. Not only is Charlotte committed to her students, she's committed to teachers as well. She checks in frequently to see how things are going and how she can help, whether it is with schoolwork or survival in general. She encourages, she encourages most people up and help them work throughout whatever task is at hand. In the area of leadership, Charlotte demonstrates leadership in many ways. She is involved with the fourth grade planning team and brings new ideas to share with the group. She takes the initiative to seek out ways that she can help those around her. "How can I help you?" or "What can I do for you?" are questions you hear when she checks in on the teachers. Charlotte steps up and works alongside long-term substitutes to ensure that meaningful learning is continued. She has taken the initiative to work through the Phonics First Training Program to prepare herself for changes in the reading instruction program. In the area of student-centered, student-centered, that describes Charlotte. Her focus each and every day is not on what she needs to accomplish, but how she can help students. She checks in every morning to make sure that anxieties are in check and any issues are resolved so her students can start their day very focused. Then it is on to helping students complete their morning work. Sometimes this means reading the problems and talking through how to solve them, or it might mean helping a student recall a process, bouncing one from one student to another. It's all about student growth and success to Charlotte. This is evident in how she fights for the needs of her students. Charlotte works diligently to gather data to prove what she already knows in her heart when a student is struggling. Likewise, she communicates daily with parents to share successes and proud moments. Charlotte has been known to take a picture of something a student has accomplished and wants nothing more than to show mom. Charlotte will take that picture and send it off to mom. It's all about valuing each student and focusing on what they need that moment. In terms of accomplishments, appreciate, letters of appreciation, Sabrina Whitmer, one of our parents at Noble 45, has attached a letter expressing her appreciation for all that Charlotte has done to help her son succeed as a fourth grader, and I just want to share a little bit of that letter of appreciation. Sabrina says, "I've been made aware that Ms. Charlotte Lineiger has been nominated for the Crystal Apple Award. I could not be more supportive of this nomination. I have had a lot of experience with teachers, therapists, and intervention specialists. So far in Colton Schooling, I want to make note that it has been an overwhelming positive experience with all involved, but Charlotte, she takes the cake." It takes a certain type of person to be able to get on a personal level with a special needs kid. She has the patience, kindness, expertise, and the intuition to know what to do and when to do it. She takes the time to thoroughly understand the mindset, strengths, and weaknesses of these children to foster an environment that produces daily social interactions, mental and academic success. Her dedication to her students shines bright. Charlotte's ability to connect and communicate at all, at a level that meets the diverse needs of her students is unmatched. Her positive energy and smile are contagious to all, and I'm so glad Colton got to be one of her kiddos. Congratulations, Charlotte, on this recognition, and thank you for all you do for the students and staff and families of Noble 45. We're very proud of you, and we're very fortunate to have you as part of the TCS family. Congratulations.
So Mr. Bose asked me just now to say a few words. If you know me, you know how hard this is going to be, the word "few." First off, Mrs. McComas, thank you so much for nominating me, and thank you to the board for recognizing that. It is kind of awkward, I'm going to say, to stand up here and get awarded for something that I'm so passionate about, and that's part of me, but at the same time, it is very humbling to receive this award. I always tell the teachers that I am lucky enough to work with, that I'm only as good as they allow me to be, and you've allowed me to be pretty amazing, so thank you for teamwork with that. So, thank you again.
Our second nominee is Mrs. Christina Lutz. Christina, would you please come forward? Christina was nominated by Morgan Grover and Stacy Kiesel, both of Noble 45. Actually, Stacy is a district-wide employee. She subs long-term for us mostly and is also part of our after-school program at Noble. Christina Lutz has been a special needs aide for us for the past seven years and a substitute educational aide for five years before that. Christina works with our multiple disability students every day at Noble 45. She also serves as a program assistant in Noble's 21st Century After-School Program. In the area of teamwork, when it comes to, when the regular teacher was out on maternity leave, Chris was able to keep things running smoothly in the classroom. She went above and beyond to prepare for new students coming into the classroom. Chris often stays late beyond her contracted day to ensure that things are prepared and ready for the students the following day. This time is spent helping the teacher or completing items she knows needs to be finalized. In the area of commitment, Christina always comes to school with a positive attitude. She comes in early and stays late to ensure that she has completed the duties of her job completely and goes above and beyond when helping with things that are not part of her job. She is always willing to lend a hand with tasks throughout the building, such as bulletin boards and covering duties for others. In the area of leadership, Christina does not wait until someone approaches her about a need. If she sees something, she brainstorm's ideas to solve the problem. She communicated effectively and professionally with the office and teaching staff about anything that arises within her duties. She took the lead on organizing many activities in the classroom while the teacher was out for maternity leave, and that things ran smoothly with the sub-teacher. In the area of taking pride in your work, Christina always gives 110%. If she is given something to make or create, she will go above and beyond making sure that the work she does is done in a professional way. She will go out of her way to laminate, type, edit her work to make sure that it is not only presentable, but professional and fun. In the area of outstanding accomplishments, awards, and letters of appreciation, some of Christina's outstanding accomplishments include organizing and helping manage Toodles, guiding students in the Budding Genius After-School Program, and her positive yearly evaluations. Congratulations, Christina, on this recognition, and thank you for all you do for the staff and students and families of Noble 45. We're very proud of you and very fortunate to have you as part of the TCS family. Congratulations.
Hi, whoever do not like to speak. I will just say, thank you very much. I'm humbled. I'd also like to thank the wonderful people I work with. They truly are the best. Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Perez. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bose, and she didn't say much, but I would tell you that I had the fortune of having to get the chance to walk two of my kids to Noble School, and seeing her there, to greet you there, I think it was just, it made it so much better. I remember going through the winter, through the cold, and you never looked down. You always picked those kids up and you always looked out for them, so I think it's wonderful that you get the award, but I think it shows what we have welcoming our kids into our school buildings, so thank you. I guess now we turn to Board Reports, Committee Reports. First, Business Advisory, Dr. Gase.
Business Advisory Council met twice since our last meeting, on May 26th, and again on June 23rd. In summary, some of the attendees complimented the Junior Achievement National Competition Award winners, and they felt that some of the mock interviews that some of these employers helped with was helpful for their presentations. Lot of discussion about skills needed in the job for specific types of skills, including some things as important as attendance, ethics, thinking independently, basic skills, general skills, and communication. It's all directed towards trying to develop some type of model for discussion and work towards educating our high school students graduating to be prepared for job performance. We did last, this past month, there was a job shadowing booklet. We talked about rotating the meetings. For instance, next, well, next month, we'll have a month off, but then we'll go to Mercy Health, followed by National Machinery, then N-C-O-S-E-S-C. Yes, June 23rd's meeting was ended with a tour of Camp Invention, all directed by capable hands of Pat Smith. And the next meeting will be August 25th at Mercy Health, Tiffin.
Thank you, Dr. Gase. Next is Finance Committee, and we did not meet, but we all got the reports in terms of our expenditures. And a thank you to the staff with Ms. Perry. In case you don't know, they were asked to provide lots of information to some quick auditing on a federal program, correct?
Yeah, it was on the S.R. 2 program.
Right. And they gave you, what, five days to turn around and give them that information? So maybe it's good that we didn't meet that week so that your staff actually gets to work and do what they have to do. But it's something we're going to have to anticipate with all these federal programs that we have, is all this monitoring. And so, thanks to their staff. Hopefully, we meet next month, but everything else is according to your five-year forecast, correct? And now, to Support Services with, well, Dr. McBride, did she leave her report with anyone?
Oh, we did not meet.
They did not meet. And then, so then we turn over to Student Achievement with Mr. Williams.
I think the big thing I want to bring up with Student Achievement is the Student Achievement Fair that's at the Capitol Conference. They've got, taking nominations for student programs, performing groups, and artwork. So I think that's something we want to try to get some nominations for from the district. Again, the Capitol Conference is in November, so I think we want to get some of that turned around here as the new school year starts.
Mr. Bose, have we ever had anything down there? I've only been there a couple of years, and I've never seen, like, our students in the shows down there.
I don't, I don't think we've had anything in the Student Achievement portion of it. I know that we've had several presentations in the few years that I've been involved in it from Tiffin City Schools, but in terms of Student Achievement, I don't believe so. Stacy Geiger with her business students presented, so, thank you.
Yeah, because I know that some of you present down there on the Board Member Administrator level, but it's been nice to see some of our kids performing as well. And back to Mr. Williams for the Policy and Governance Committee Report.
The primary activity this past month was a review of several policies that we're going to need to update here in the near future related to technology updates, specifically the use of Chromebooks and other, some other social media type things. It spanned, Mr. Kizbeth, help me, which policies was it? It was E, it's slipping my mind. I think the policy group E-D. Yeah. So there was some minor changes that'll be coming to the bulk of the policies in that group. Again, just sort of updates to reflect the use of technology in the schools now.
Because I know that's something Mr. Weber was asking about, was the policy. Is it too late, Mr. Bose, and Mr. Richards isn't here, and Dr. Zoller isn't either, but to have something in place for the new school year, it would require a policy committee to come up with something and then have three readings, right?
The timeline probably, we wouldn't meet the timeline for that, based on July, and then August would be, the next meeting, the school year would already be started at that point.
And most of the changes aren't, aren't things that change handbooks or things like that, right? They're mostly just updates to wording in policies, board policies.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
I've got one other thing here. So it's noted in the exhibits on page 12. We've got something for all the board members to review. It's the Social Media Guidelines for School Board Members. It outlines a set of guidelines for how board members should be interacting with social media if they choose to, right? Not a mandate by any means to interact on social media, but if you choose to, what are some of the, I mean, some of the the guardrails and guidelines around that? I think we've got a little bit of discussion here, if we want to treat it more like the Board Operating Principles, or if we want to treat it as an actual policy. So looking for some discussion on that upcoming, but that is on page 12 in the Agenda.
Did you want the discussion now, or?
No, just, just for all the board members to review that, and so for some upcoming discussion.
Because he did email it out to the board members. I remember reading it over already. I think, did it go to everybody or no?
It just went to, I believe, the board members, but it's never been in a official board meeting as a topic.
A question on the Chromebooks. Did we pass that insurance plan? Is that, is that part of the?
So that would, that would be in Support Services. So Megan and, sorry, Dr. McBride and I have been keeping in contact about which portions of that are Support Services versus Policy. So there's, there's certainly some of it that has to do more with just the technology aspect of Support Services, and some of it is definitely policy changes that Mr. Weber's asked for.
And I think that's probably going to be on the plate for the new superintendent, that we definitely need something for the next school year on that.
Yeah. I think long-term, there's a meaningful financial investment that's going to be required, and I don't want to go too much into it. Mr. Weber's here, but I don't want to give too many details. But there, right now, we're running on some grant money for some of that, and eventually, we would expect that that money would no longer be available, so we'll have to figure out how to, how to fund that every-year investment for those Chromebooks.
So I guess you would just get with Dr. McBride and when you want to set it on for Agenda for Discussion.
Okay.
So next, we turn to 4.02, Superintendent's Assistant Superintendents Reports and Recommendations. Again, Dr. Zoller is not present this evening, so Mr. Bose?
Thank you, Mr. Perez. The two items that I have, I'm actually going to defer to Mrs. Kuhn to talk about the Tornado Academy handbooks and the Extended Learning Opportunities in Camp Invention. Kuhn?
My apologies to the board for this being the first reading for the Tornado Academy Handbook. What we have to do with that handbook is actually merge all of our handbooks together, so it takes a lot of refinement and going through and making sure that there's not duplication in the handbook. What we have done a little bit different, as we're an online program, we've made sure that we have live links within our handbook. So for example, if they want to find information pertaining particularly to the honor roll, they would click in the Table of Contents, and it would take them directly to that portion in the handbook. It just makes it a little bit easier for operation. We've updated and included all of our dates for required sessions for students, and then also updated our staffing information in the handbook. But outside of that, it's the same as what you have read in all the other handbooks. It's just a merger of all of them together, and then specified in regards to online programming, so. In talking about our summer program, I really want to thank Randy Conger, Tim Weber, Aaron Gillig, Don Cook, and Emily Boone. These individuals have been extremely helpful in getting our programs up and running. Tim Weber and his department are making sure that we have the technology that we need. Randy Conger, of course, is making sure that we have transportation in place. Aaron Gillig is assisting with making sure that we have supports in place to meet our students with special needs. And then also, Don Cook and Emily Boone, they help supervise those programs. We did have to make some adjustments with our summer program for K through 8 students. Initially, we had hoped for a six-week program, but as staff is tired and needs a break, rightfully so, we made an adjustment, and we have adjusted it to two-week sessions, and there were three options for pairs to sign up for. The first session completed last week. We had 39 students who participated in that session. This session, we have 16 students, and the final session, we have 21 students signed up for it. Last year, we did allow students to sign up for multiple sessions, but again, due to staffing concerns, we've limited it just to one, two-week session that they can sign up for. Our high school program, 9 through 12, Emily Boone is assisting in that program along with all of our staff who's making sure that students are understanding the material. We have 63 students who are participating in it, and they are taking over 20 courses. We've only been in that program, this just started the third week of that program, and we've already had students earn 13.5 credits that they were in desperate need of earning to try to help them get back on track for graduation. So we're very excited about that. The incentive for that program is that as soon as the students finish their work and earn the credit, they no longer have to attend the program. So there is a large incentive for them to try to get that work done, so. Camp Invention, I really want to thank Pat Smith and Judy Downey. Camp Invention is something that I got involved with two years ago. I actually use vacation days, so I can kind of get back to my roots and enjoy teaching. And it's a phenomenal program. It's four days. It's hands-on programming for students, and it's specifically related to science and math and creativity in general, so it's like a STEAM program. We presently, this last year, we had 88 students who participated in our program. That's the largest number of students that we've had to date. Typically, that program would cost $245 for each student. Thanks to Pat Smith and her ability to secure donations, we are able to only offer that for $125 to each student. We had over eight districts represented as part of those eight stu, 88 students, and it was very exciting to see how eager the students were, and it's extremely rewarding to kind of get to have the opportunity to sit back on that side and have that engagement with students, so. Wonderful program. I highly encourage you, if you've never seen it, to stop out and check it out. I know Business Advisory went through, and they really seemed to be impressed with that program, so. Any questions?
How many, how many instructors were there this year?
For Camp Invention?
Yeah.
There are four instructors, and we had student assistants. Each classroom this year had, I believe, three students in those classrooms. Some of them are considered more like high advisors. They're our high school students, and then typically, there are middle school students who also assist.
Oh, same, okay.
Mm-hmm. And we had Tiffin City School students who assisted. We had two Mohawk students who assisted, and there was a Seneca East student who also assisted, so. Great program.
I was able to visit, and the excitement, the enthusiasm, and the energy in all four classrooms was unbelievable. It was just a really exciting thing to see. You could tell the kids were getting a lot of, a lot of good stuff out of it.
That's all I have this evening, Mr. Perez. Thank you.
Good to see you, Director of Operations. Good to see you back.
Yes. Item 7.08 tonight is authorizing us to buy three buses for this year. We're looking to get a, one International IC and two Bluebirds, 84 passengers. We do, we did get a grant from the federal government for $46,000 per bus towards the bill, so that's why we're getting three this year instead of our normal two.
Is that a special grant, or is that?
Every once in a while, they do that, yes. But that's the first I've gotten that.
It's a special state grant, and this is the first time that they've given funding for three buses. They don't give the full funding. They give about $46,000 per bus up to three buses. Nope. But it's, no, it's not a regular grant.
Are they air-conditioned?
No.
Why is one bus smaller than the other two?
Just the way we fit needs, certain areas, certain routes. We've tried to replace the same thing.
Got you. Thanks.
And then, Mr. Daniels, can you tell us how the sidewalk's going in front of the high school?
There's going to be a pour Wednesday morning, and the final pour should be Friday morning.
Okay. And have we heard anything else on the track with OSS Sports? Is that who it is?
Mr. Richards and me walked the track and had some discussions, so.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, with all those reports concluded then, that turns us to Section 5, the opportunity for the public to address the board. Per our board policy, each person addressing the board shall give his or her name and address if several people- If several people wish to speak, each person is allowed three minutes until the, uh, total time of thirty minutes is used during that period. No person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. So if anybody wants to speak, just go ahead and approach the microphone. Okay, hearing none. I do have a letter that was emailed to the board. Um, they could not attend and ask that it be read. There is one section though, that I'm not going to name the employee because I think under our policy would be an employee complaint. But I think the other speaks for itself. Uh, this letter comes from Callie Cessna, one fifteen Mohawk Street. I am a parent of a child enrolled at FLC and on an IEP. I am his advocate and biggest supporter. My son receives speech therapy, occupational therapy, and physical therapy. As you can imagine, that is a lot of time during the week to miss on classroom activities, but has been recommended and approved by TCS representatives and FLC staff. During the last board meeting, I heard Mrs. Tuitt mention that the TCS has no idea about how many of our district kids are enrolled outside of our pre- provided preschool. I struggle to understand how that is even possible when a representative from TCS is always present on my IEP meetings and they have to approve each recommendation made for services. Are our district representatives not keeping track of which students they are participating in meetings for? During my last meeting involving TCS and FLC, I was critically unimpressed with the demeanor and attitude of the representation. This was the first meeting we had had to discuss the, his plan for the next school year and I did not appreciate the way I was talked to during that meeting. Where I understand the fiscal responsibility pieces, argument to push our students to Lincoln preschool. I find it unfair that our desires for where my child should attend and my decision about where it's best fit for him must collide. I felt bullied into moving my child to, to the Lincoln preschool during the meeting. I was told that the decision to approve my child for a four-day school week was reliant on me setting a meeting at Lincoln to tour the facility and discuss my child's potential enrollment. I would like to note that when I went through our early intervention transition, I toured both facilities and made my decision on where I wanted to send my child and he has since been enrolled in FLC since December of twenty twenty. My last meeting in May, I was told the reason TCS could not guarantee anything in regard to making the decision for my child's next school year was because it was a price tag. Student Services is supposed to be about what is best for our students to make the successful, not what's best for the district financially. And then it says, laying out a timeline for you, I was told I could expect an answer for an approval by Friday, May twentieth. I called to follow up that day and sent an email requesting information on when I should expect a decision to, and includes Dr. Zoller and Mr. Bose, and I think it was emailed to us as well. On Wednesday, May twenty-fifth, I sent the follow-up email because I received no response. I received a general response that TCS hopes to have a resolution soon. On June eighth, I emailed the group again, no response. And then on June twenty-third, I emailed this group again, no response. I am addressing this as I can imagine that many other parents are left waiting for responses for their children. These are our children and we hold the right to send them where they will be most successful. And I firmly believe that we are bullying parents into sending their children to Lincoln to get the services they need. We are making our district look bad. I felt I was left with the following options after my meeting. Send them to Lincoln and get all the services they need, even though I chose not to utilize this preschool or two, keep my decision on what is best for him being at FLC and risk not getting him at all the resources he needs to be successful. And that is unfair to both me and my son. And the plan for open enrollment should not impact my child currently enrolled at FLC. Having a special needs child is hard enough. Please stop making this harder on us. Take our children and families out of the drama with FLC and let's develop a plan to set all our district children up for success instead of our internal egos. I am once again requesting a response so I can adequately plan for the next school year. Thank you for your time. And I think we got the emails, so we would just refer to the superintendent to address that per our policy. Correct, Mr. Bose? Any other further comments from the audience? Hearing none. Then we'll move to the consent agenda. Item six, and can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do you want me to go through each item, Ms. Perry?
You may want to at least, um, recite the headings.
Okay, so consent agenda, which is six oh one, approve the minutes from the May regular and special board meetings. Six oh two, approve the treasurer's reports for May. Six oh three, the employment is outlined below. Six oh four, donations and grants. Six oh five, the certificate of the fiscal officer with those invoices. And six oh six, supplemental appropriations. And six oh seven, fund to fund transfer. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, permanent improvement on supplemental, that was for the roof, is that?
Yes, the supplemental appropriations are for this year's adjustments and yes, the four hundred and twenty-eight thousand and the permanent improvement is for the Colombian roofing project. So that we would be able to put that purchase order out there and get that project started.
Can you discuss that, Mr. Daniels?
Yes, the, the roof life expectancy was down to about two years. If we didn't do anything, this will get us a ten-year guarantee on the roof moving forward.
And that's a Colombian?
The entire roof a Colombian.
And when do you foresee them doing the work?
Uh, starting very soon, hopefully next week.
Oh, okay. So it'll be done before school starts, hopefully?
Yes.
Cause we're doing another school too, correct? Is it with the, is it with the, like, the coating?
Yes, it's the rubber coating.
That's all out of permanent improvement?
That, that's correct.
Okay, so did we have a motion?
So moved.
A second, please.
Second.
Okay, any other further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, vote please.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabath?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Now to the action items, seven point oh one. Uh, the recommendation is to approve the administrator contract date correction. And that was for Ms. Tuitt. We approved the contract, but the date needed to be corrected on the term, correct?
It was, it was renewed with a July first starting date and her contract term actually begins in August.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kizbeth? Any discussion?
I have a question. It goes from, in August first through July thirtieth, not July thirty-first?
It should be July thirty-first. Thank you for pointing that out. And that's important because she does work two hundred and sixty days a year. So we need it to say the thirty-first. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Vote please.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabath?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Seven point oh two, renew the administrator contract and that's for Kate Plot, social worker and student family support service specialist. Do I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kizbeth? Any discussion?
My only question is, most of these are eight one. This one starts July one.
The administrator contracts vary. Usually, um, an administrator that works twelve months will start August first. Um, and it's just aligns with the higher revised code and their contract will be August through July. But when we have administrators that are less than twelve months, I believe that Kate Plot is a two-hundred-day employee. Um, so the July through June for the fiscal year, that's appropriate for her because she might start, um, in August and finish in June. So that start date becomes a little bit more irrelevant. So we align it with the fiscal year.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, vote please.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabath?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Then eight point eleven, correct? Approve the administrator contract. And that is for Jerry Nadeau. Is that how you pronounce his name?
Nadeau.
Nadeau. For his director of student services. And can you explain that, Mr. Bose?
Yes, Mr. Nadeau is, uh, currently living in the Columbus area and employed with Buckeye Community Hope Foundation as a school improvement specialist. He's originally from Northeastern Ohio and, um, graduated from Jackson High School up around the Maslin area, I believe it is. Uh, he holds degrees from Mount Union, Akron, and Ashland University. Um, prior to his work at the Buckeye Community School or Foundation, he was the Life Skills High School Director of Academic Supports and Special Education. So he comes to us with a vast background and experience as a special education. He was a special ed teacher for eight years in the early two thousands before he went into the administrative ranks. So we're very excited to get Jerry on board with us and get him into the district to start working with our special education staff.
Okay, any other discussion? I need a motion, don't I?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Kizbeth?
Second.
Second, Dr. Gase? Vote please.
Mr. Kizabath?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Then seven point oh three, as explained, these are kind of out of order numerically, but there's no missing items there. The superintendent recommends that the Tiffin City School Board of Education approve the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three Colombian parent-student handbook. And do I have some, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Williams, discussion? I have some discussions. I know it's not going to get changed in this book, but for the next year. Uh, I've brought up this issue before with the grade point scale. I have in my hands the upper Arlington scale, uh, scale that they use. An A minus is ninety to ninety-two. I believe in our scale, that would be a B plus. And I've always asked, how come, you know, when we transferred to our grades for college, our kid's going to be showing a B, their kid's going to be showing an A. It'll affect their GPA. Is there any reason that we're not compatible to other schools or are we putting our kids at disadvantages in that? That kid's going to have an A on their transcript. Ours is going to have a B. And so it's not like they give any extra credit for having a Tiffin A or Tiffin B. So why aren't we consistent with the other schools? And then the other thing is, I hope down the road that the manual become more friendly. I think it starts off with the grades and then it goes straight into like, um, discipline, as if discipline is the focus of our school. And I know as a parent, I kind of want to see where parking is, where, what the dress code is, what the grading scale is. And then I think we did discuss with Dr. Zoller, at least I did, the idea that we would revise or look at the discipline process, especially for athletes, to make it clear, um, what the process is. And then I think also in the dress code section, I think that needs to some point be revisited. I think it has like shorts, skirts up to mid-thigh and then it says no gang colors. I don't know why the two run into each other, but, um, it's, you know, it seems kind of like thrown together and it doesn't seem very well organized or useful for a parent coming in. What do I actually can or can't use? And then I did discover, again, rereading it, that we have a parking policy that apparently hasn't been enforced. Did you know that the parking by the school is for staff and faculty? And I think it offers us an opportunity to either someday either number our spots or control it. But students, you know, make, maybe they want to, you know, we can issue permits or dedicate parking spaces for people so that there's an incentive to do that. And if staff expects to have staff parking by the school, they should be able to have it by the school if it's meant to be for them. Um, and then I think, I think those are just basic outlines for, I think we can improve the student handbook, but just down the road. Just ideas, but other than that, we can't do it today because it's got to be approved. Um, and then maybe some links like yours has.
Uh, and just note, like, the reason for the order that it's in, it's alphabetical.
Yes.
So that, that's why it goes in the order that, you know, you happen to mention, but if it has those bookmarks like ours does,
Right.
it makes it much easier.
I'm used to dealing with, like, we deal numerical sections, but we deal with them in the order that, you know, we, I guess we don't do it like the library's alphabetical as well. But, you know, I think it's some of those, and Dustin has mentioned, some of the things I think have to be revisited. We don't have a, what did they, what was our committee, program committee anymore to look at some of that and say?
And dress code was looked at about four years ago.
I remember that.
Parents who were involved in that.
But I think it was looking at a whole.
There's always time for review.
Right. I think they were looking at a dress code and not just what's actually in our dress code to see if it's even enforceable or what's, you know, can it be tightened up or what? Cause I think parents have said they just want to see what's, they're enforced, but I don't know if it's really clear what's in there. So. But again, I think that has to be approved before we start the school year, correct? Oh, that, one issue is, there's a process in there for a student complaining of, I guess, about, um, harassment, sexual harassment from another student. Then it goes through counselors and stuff like that. I didn't see anything in the manual about a student wanting to complain about a faculty member or a coach or an adult. And I think that probably needs to be something we look at so that students know that they can also report that as well. But other than that, I'll open up the floor.
I think anytime there's a sexual harassment, it's reported and duly sent to central office where there is an officer in charge. And speaking of the grades.
Uh-huh. There I am.
I can hear you.
Um, there's been an awful lot of time put in to our grading scale, an extraordinary amount of time. Not that it can't be reviewed, but, uh, as being formerly a high school principal, I can proudly tell you that getting a diploma from Columbia High School means something. And so I would hate to see us water down grades because somebody else is doing it. I, that's just a philosophical point of view.
But, well, it's not watering down. You got ninety percent there, you got ninety percent here. It's the same performance, you know? And now we're competing with, you know, online academies. I know Dustin was just mentioning before, we had schools at collegiate level, right? As were eighty percent. And, you know,
Is it eighty percent? What's that tell you?
Well, but that's what your kid's going to compete with and.
Well, I'm sorry, that's a, that's a false, that's a false reading.
Yes.
Eighty percent is eighty percent.
Yes, but what I'm saying is, that's the discussion I have. So if anybody else has any other discussion, we can have a vote on it. Vote to approve the student handbook.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabath?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Then that takes us to item seven point oh four, approve the NCOESC Educational Service Contract for FY two thousand twenty-three, correct? And the superintendent recommends that we approve that and I believe he emailed his recommendation to the whole board as to his outline and he's not here tonight. But, um, just to give some history, after the last board meeting, um, they did have a meeting with our superintendent and with Dr. McBride and myself. That's a meeting they requested, but also with our superintendent, which is something we required. Um, they wanted to give some outlines of some of the things that were said at the meeting, but I think ultimately what was decided is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bose, but there's going to be a series of meetings from now on between the two to try to work on this relationship. And I think, I emailed to the board what I think summary of what I thought happened at the meeting was. I want to be respectful of all the board members. I didn't ask to be there, um, but was invited, I think, because they did president, vice president. But I think in reality, we have to understand that, one, these discussions should have probably started in January earlier. Um, it's kind of late in the, in the process, but two is I think we have to expect that the relationship between the two of us, I think both sides are probably going to have to reevaluate some things. And I think for each side, I think, but we're not looking at, in a position to make any major changes today. So I think that's why the superintendent recommended keeping the contract that he proposed at this point. So. There's any other discussion? Well, first of all, I need a motion to approve it before we have discussion.
So moved.
Second? Okay, now any discussion? Hey, do you have anything, Dustin?
No, just to kind of echo what you said, I think as, you know, Mr. Richards comes in, I think we need to make sure that we do have a timeframe in mind that we want to have a, a more of a strategic plan around the, the preschool and what we intend to do with it, right? Um, you know, not, hopefully not find ourselves in another spot here where we've got a, a contract we have to vote on because it's really our only option. I mean, we, we kind of, we don't have many options at this point.
All right, so, and I would just like to say, I have full confidence in our program at Lincoln School and in our staff. So I know, I've heard from parents that are ecstatic about our program, you know, but I still hear from families that are happy with the FLC. And I think philosophically as a board, one day, you know, I think it's been the position of the philosophy of the board before I was ever on it, that we want to give parents a choice. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Gase?
Yeah, I think that's, that's been, um, this goes back quite a few years, uh, previous board members, uh, had some fundamental dis- disagreements with the previous superintendent, the NCOSC. And, um, I think, um, the last few years, boards have done a pretty good job of getting back in, uh, a better relationship with the NCOSC, which I think is extremely important.
But I think.
To my, to my, uh, uh, perusal, I, I believe that there's a lot of these things. And to my, to my, uh, uh, perusal, I, I believe that there's, a lot of these things are somewhat semantical, there, there's, there are differences in, in perceptions. I think we all are looking at things similarly. We just don't believe that the process suits the way we believe, like, Tiffin City and the, uh, the FLC within, in regards to some of the, um, um, the evaluations go, like, who's in charge? And, and in the past, it's been a kind of a handshake deal. And some of these things were agreed upon for so long that it becomes second nature to what you do. And when it's, when it's written down or when something gets adjusted on the other side, it does change the, the, the approach a bit. And I, I think the bottom line is, we have to codify all this in, in writing and make sure that everybody's in agreement and so that we're not, you know, stepping on each other's toes. So I agree with the Doctors' hour, you know, let's take our time and, and, um, make su, make sure we got this right.
And just to clarify, the, the item we're being asked to vote on today is identical to the item from last month, that's correct?
And then I think we did ask about parsing out the parts with the staff, and I want them to also know, it's just not about the FLC. We get critical staff through them, Mr. Weber, and we get our curriculum director and who put us through the whole tornado academy, and we could have done it without her. So I think we have to be mindful that this relationship is bigger than just one little component. And further that this is a discussion that really needs to be had, and I think we stressed it at the meeting between, it's going to be Mr. Richards now, Ms. Loring over at, at the ESC, that this is what the professionals do and he needs to tell us what's in the best interest of our district and have that information for the board and, you know, give us the best contract for our district, as I'm sure they're going to be doing for themselves, so. But I, any other discussion? Okay, vote please.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes. Item seven point oh five, approve the OAPC Locals five seventy and five seventy-one, ASME AFL-CIO tentative agreements. And these are for the other bargaining units to get the same agreement that the other units have, correct, Ms. Perry?
Yes, this would be for the food service, um, and educational aids.
Okay.
So move. Second.
Discussion? Vote please.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes. Seven point oh six, approve salary wage schedule adjustments. And these are for the district's administrators as outlined below. And again, this is, um, rights for lump-sum payments too, um, adjust our administrators as well, correct?
This is all non-represented employees, so that would be administrators and all support staff that are not represented.
Okay.
Such as, such as secretaries, bus drivers, and so forth.
Uh, Mrs. Perry, am I allowed to vote on this?
If you think there's a conflict, don't even discuss it.
You should abstain.
So don't even discuss it at that point, you have a conflict?
I had to think about the classification, but, yeah, you should abstain.
Okay, so, any other discussion between the remaining board members? Okay, hearing done, then, give a vote, please. Or do we have a motion already?
We don't have a motion.
Okay, I'll move to approve it, can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Vote please.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Abstain.
Seven point oh seven, approve the compensation step increases for administrators and supervisors. Um, is that Ms. Perry or Mr. Bose? Can you explain that?
That is, uh, Doctor Zoller is recommending that all administrators and supervisors, um, bump one step on the salary schedule. For example, from step nine to step ten or step two to step three on the salary schedule.
And so the people that are recommended for hiring at steps today, that's the steps they're going to be at, okay?
Yeah, this is for all returning administrators. Um, all other non-represented employees automatically increase a step based on the support staff handbook that was already approved by the board years ago.
Okay. Okay, so, motion to approve seven oh seven?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kizbeth, any discussion? And then for all of these, these are in your forecast already?
Yes, yes, all of these action items have already been forecasted.
Okay. Vote please.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes. Seven point oh eight, adopt resolution authorizing the purchase of school buses, Mr. Daniel, you described that already? Motion, motion, Dr. Gase, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Williams, discussion, vote?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes. Seven point oh nine, approve the workers' compensation group retros, retrospective rating program. We're already part of this, correct?
Yes, this is a renewal, this is the same group that we've been with at least since two thousand twelve, um, probably even earlier than that. And they give us a discounted group rating for our workers' compensation premium.
Okay, motion?
So move.
Motion, Kizbeth?
Second.
Second, Dr. Gase? Discussion, vote?
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes. Seven point one oh, approve Ohio Health Mansfield Hospital Home Instruction Tutor Contract. And I think y'all have a copy of that.
This, this is for, um, our kids that are being serviced in Mansfield.
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Williams, any discussion? Vote please.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes. Seven point eleven, approve the two thousand twenty-two twenty-three CCP Agreement with Terror State Community College. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Motion, Dr. Gase, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Williams, any discussion? Vote please.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes. And then seven point one two, approve the FY twenty-three Student and Family Support Specialist Services Program Contract. You have a motion to do so? Or do you guys want to have it explained first?
This is a contract, um, that Calvert Catholic Schools is utilizing through auxiliary services to hire a family support specialist.
Okay, a motion to do so then?
That's, that's through the ESC.
It's through the ESC, but it's funded through auxiliary, auxiliary services funds.
Auxiliary services are state funds that are restricted for uses at Calvert.
All right, where we act as their agent, correct?
We're the fiscal agent, yes.
So.
So move.
Second?
Second, Mr. Kizbeth, discussion, vote?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes. Seven point one three, adopt temporary appropriation measures for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, Ms. Perry?
This is the annual, um, requirement so that we can continue spending money on July first because this year's appropriations are going to expire on June thirtieth. Um, so we adopt a temporary measure based on the five-year forecast. Um, and we do that until we can have the Budget Commission certify our ending balances that are determined on June thirtieth and the estimated revenue for next year. Once the resources are certified by the Budget Commission, then we can set our permanent appropriations for actual expenditure levels.
Okay, motion?
So move.
Motion, Dr. Gase, second?
Second.
Mr. Williams, discussion, vote?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes. Okay, that takes us to the added item. Seven point one five, approve the administrator contract, and this would be to hire David Alvarado to be the next Colombian High School Principal at Class One Step Ten for two sixty days. Do I, and starting August first, correct? And then the next one following that, six, seven point one six is to hire him as a consultant before that, correct, Mr. Bose? So he can get in there. So regarding seven point one five, do I have a motion to approve that contract?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
We, we are extremely excited to get Mr. Alvarado on board with Tiffin City Schools. He is a well-respected leader and administrator, uh, within our area. Uh, he comes to us from currently Finley City Schools as an associate principal at their high school. Prior to that, he was the superintendent of Hopewell Local Schools. Uh, and prior to that, he was a middle school principal in Finley, Finley for several years. Um, David lives just outside of Tiffin, uh, with his wife, I think he's, has two grown sons, but nonetheless, we are, we're, we're really excited to get David, um, back at Tiffin City Schools. He started his career here in nineteen ninety-eight, I believe, as an intervention specialist. So we're looking forward to having him rejoin the TCS family, if you will.
And Mr. Richards was involved in the process?
Correct, he was.
Do you have any other questions for Mr. Bose on that? Okay, can I have a, we already had a motion to do so, discussion's over, vote please.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes. Seven point one six, has approved the consulting agreement. It's up to ten days before he starts from July first through July thirty-first. And that's to help with the transition, so.
So move.
Motion, Kizbeth? Second case, any discussion? Vote please.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes. And that takes us to section nine, opportunity for the public to dialogue with the board. If anybody wants to start a dialogue with the board, just step up to the microphone. Okay. There's nobody online either, correct? So we don't. Okay, nobody approaching the microphone, we're going to move to item ten, board discussion, it said TBD. Um, Dr. McBride wanted to discuss a possible board retreat with Mr. Richards. I think he emailed all the board with a possible date, so I would just ask that everyone get back to him to see if that's even a date. And then I think at some point, probably something that would be beneficial to everyone, so. Any other items that the board wants to discuss?
Um, now that our student representatives are no longer with us at the meetings, um, do we have any representation at Sentinel any longer?
No.
Okay.
Actually, yes, we do, we do, it is still, Mr. Widman is still appointed to that board. And so he was having the, the student cover for him, but he's the actual appointed representative for the school board.
Okay.
So in his term, I think expires maybe December, because I appointed him, it's four years, right?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Okay, so he's the official Tiffin City Schools representative on the Sentinel Board.
So I guess we could contact him and ask him for a written report until a student starts, if that's what we want to do. But I know Sentinel did get some awards over, I wasn't sure if any of those kids were ours in the competition, there were four that went on. They were Vanguard Sentinel, so I wasn't sure if they were all Vanguard. Okay, but that's a good question. The other question I have is, uh, what are we going to do about the student reps for the upcoming school year that was never resolved? I think Mr. Trissler's still there, right? No, he's gone, so that was never decided what we're going to do with them. And I know that students were interested in applying for that.
Uh, is that a, uh, sorry, is that a, maybe a discussion with, uh, Mr. Alvarado?
I guess so, it doesn't, well, consulting days, I don't know if we want to burn him on that, but, um, but at least get a process for getting applications from interested students publicized or something, so you could sort through them later. Okay, so, any other items for board discussion while you guys are here? Okay, hearing done, then, going to move to the item eleven, I believe there is some property that you wish to discuss for Mr. Daniels? We're not, okay, so there are no items for executive session. And so at this point, we go to item thirteen, a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Check.
Okay, vote please.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.